Good evening. Tonight is the March 11th, 2024 Town of Lakeville Select Board Meeting. We've got all members present this evening, members Fabian, Carboni, and Day. Is there anybody recording the meeting besides Lake Cam tonight? Seeing none, we'll move to number one, Select Board Announcements. Ms. Fabian, do you like to go first? I know you had a couple of things.
Uh, yeah. So I have been in contact with Chief O'Brien, who's our emergency coordinator, Norm Morrell, who's our representative, and I know our own office is getting lots and lots of calls on the water issues. Just so everyone knows, the boards were all pulled out on September 18th. So it is not a question of when are we pulling the boards out. The boards have all been out since September 18th. I know individually I'm receiving messages, so we are all watching the water levels. January had over nine inches of rain, which kind of started some of the problem. February was lower, hoping maybe not to go higher, but we are all definitely keeping an eye. And there's even right now water flooding that usually doesn't have water in places. So a couple of folks told me, so I went by and I took a look at Quiddicus. Quiddicus seems like it's low, but according to New Bedford Water, who monitors that pretty closely, it's also on its way up. So it's not like, you know, anyone's doing anything to keep that one low and not letting the water. I mean, Long Pond doesn't really, you know. So all I can say is all the boards are down. All the boards have been out since September 18th, but this is the problem that the town, through the help of the state, we've been studying for five years now. And we hopefully will have some word in the next couple of weeks on the river project, which is, you know, clearing some weeds out of the river to try to get the water to move quicker out of Assawamset, which will help everywhere. We've done some weed removal, so we know. But that's where we're at. So there haven't been any, you know, major changes to the way things are done yet because it all costs money and we're looking for grants and everything else we can do. But everybody is aware that the water is getting high, including us at Town Hall. And we all remember 2010, so just the boards are out. That's the only news I really can share right now.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, or is that the?
That's about it.
The one major issue?
Yep, that's it.
Let's see, does the ranger have anything you'd like to share?
No, I'm actually good.
Okay. All right. So in addition to the water heights, tomorrow evening, March 12th, Select Board Candidate Forum and Debate is scheduled at the Lakeville Council on Aging at One Deer Crossing Road, which is off of Precinct Street from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. The public is invited to attend the forum. Lakeville residents can either email questions to admin@lakecam.tv. That's A-D-M-I-N at L-A-K-E-C-A-M dot TV. Or drop questions off in the Lake Cam basket at the Lakeville Library near the front desk. Questions will be called for duplication, interest, and should be general enough in nature so that they apply to all four candidates. There may be time for additional questions at the forum. Lake Cam will also record and broadcast the forum. Related to that, town's annual election will be taking place in April 1st from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Loon Pond Lodge located at Ted Williams Camp. All residents of Lakeville, 18 years of age and over, who are not already registered voters, must be registered to vote by Friday, March 22nd, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. Please visit the town's website homepage under News Announcements for additional information. A reminder that dog licenses are due by April 30th. If you no longer have your dog, please call the town's clerk's office to let them know. And then we had two other announcements, both related to the Assawamset Elementary School. One, I know a lot of parents will be excited about this. All of the equipment to repair the playground arrived last week. And the superintendent says that the estimate they've been given is four weeks of work to complete it. They're estimating to start around March 18th and finish by the end of school break in April. And there were some special callouts for folks that helped move this along. Director of Inspection Services Nate Darling, Director of Facilities Greg Goodwin from the district, Superintendent Alan Strauss himself, and other members of the district. And last but not least, Senator Rodrickson, his office, who really helped move along all those funds to get this done for us. So we appreciate that. And as well, Assawamset Elementary School will be holding an open house in Clothing Drive on March 16th from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. So if you want to go check out the new windows and doors and how that went, you can go do that on March 16th. And again, they'll be accepting donations of clothing. And if there's nothing else, we'll pass it off to Mr. Nunes.
Now, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Basically, the last two weeks have been working on the budget, working on health insurance issues. Also, I did have a, just basically an informational meeting on the old Lakeville Hospital property, just to get me up to speed on what is being proposed and their schedule and their plans to move forward. So that was basically an informational meeting for myself.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. We'll be going through the budget for the first time this evening a little later. So we'll be meeting with the Finance Committee at 5:45. We have a few minutes before that. I'm expecting number four will take more than seven minutes on the healthcare item, so we'll skip that. Do we want to take number five, the MOA with the New England Police Benevolent Association, or do we need more time?
Yeah, we'll have time for that.
Take my time. Okay. So we'll go to item number five, discuss some possible vote to sign the memorandum of agreement with the New England Police Benevolent Association Local 185. So, Mr. Nunes, would you like to just give us a brief update on where we are?
So as you know, this has been ongoing for a while, negotiations with the police union. I'm pleased to say that we have come to an agreement, subject to the approval of the Select Board. Chief Perkins and I have met on a number of occasions to go over the agreement, as well as the cost of the agreement. I also met with the president of the union on several occasions to see if we could iron out an agreement. I'm pleased to say that all sides have come to an agreement. So on the agenda this evening is the memorandum of agreement that would need to be signed by the town, Select Board, and the president of the union. Chief Perkins is here to get into any of the specifics, any of the questions that the board may have.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Nunes or Chief Perkins on the MOA?
Can we just get the dates on here? So it's July 1st, 2023?
To June 30th, 2026. It's a three-year agreement.
I think in the first paragraph, it just said that it was an agreement from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2023. I think in the first. Am I reading that wrong?
No, the dates need to be flipped to the newer ones.
Okay. Yeah. Just in the first paragraph.
Yeah. Also, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you all know, we were going through mediation, approaching the JLMC, the Joint Labor Management Committee process, which would have extended this into the next fiscal year, which would, at the end of the day, would have cost the town and union some significant fees. So it was good that we were able to come to this agreement. Chief, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
I think everybody at...
Come on.
I think everybody in the department's happy to have an agreement and be under contract. And they look forward to serving the town and the townspeople.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your, all your help in this.
Thank you very much.
I'm just really happy that we were able to get this done. Like Bob said, it could have gone on until the fall. And, you know, we already have budget challenges and we would have had to, you know, find money for, you know, the time that they've already worked, that they haven't been getting paid. So it's really nice to be able to put this to bed. And I just really want to thank Bob because I think he came in with a completely clean slate, which I totally appreciate. And, you know, just started from the beginning with the chief and just took a clear look at it. And I really just appreciate your efforts on this, Bob. You too, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
I'll make a motion to enter into agreement and sign the memorandum of agreement with the New England Police Benevolent Association Local 185 for the agreement period effective July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. Second?
Quick discussion, just last point I did want to make as well, which is in addition to, you know, Mr. Nunes and Chief Perkins and all your help in this, I know, I also want to thank the union themselves. I think everybody kind of moved around and found something that was agreeable to everybody. So please do relay that to their president and all the members as well.
Definitely. Yep.
Okay, so we've got a motion in a second. Member Fabian?
Aye.
Member Carboni?
Carboni, aye.
And Day, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we'll sign that this evening and on the next. Appreciate it. All right, so we have three more minutes until we can actually welcome FinCom. Let's see. It'll take a while, it'll take a while. I believe Tracy informed us, we do not yet have somebody for number eight, the Insurance Advisory Committee. So we might have to come back to that at a later time. Vote number nine, discuss some possible vote on recommendations on a site plan, 210 Kenneth Walsh Drive. Did everybody have an opportunity to look at the materials? And did you have any comments for the planning board?
So I did a little bit of research and I didn't realize that they make high-end votes there, I thought. And I didn't know that, so I'm going to have to take a little more time to look at that. But my usual comments to the planning board all deal with parking. And, you know, I know we have our staff members who, you know, cover all their responsibilities, but for me, it's always a little bit about parking. And I don't think that's an issue here, but otherwise I have faith the planning board will do their best. I just know, I was, I'm happy to see that their business is growing because they had not been here too long ago, putting one addition on. So to see that it's expanding. But again, they're not looking for water allocation or anything, so, you know, I... Yay, they're growing. Local business.
That's always good. Yeah, I didn't see anything regarding new curb cuts or water allocations. I really didn't have any comments. I'll leave it to planning and others. So I guess we have no comment for planning board at this time.
No additional comment.
All right. It's 5:44. Do we just wait it out?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Did we skip the retiree?
Yes.
Okay, because...
We had no name. You informed us of...
We may have to have a discussion on that.
Okay, we can come back.
There seems to be a time concern.
All right, there's a time element, then we'll come back a little later to it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's now 5:45. Projector is bright. Okay. Chairman Plonker, would you like to open your meeting this evening?
Good evening, everybody. Karen Plonker, Lakeville Finance Committee, opening up this meeting at 5:45. In attendance, I have Member Candido, Member Constant, Member DeRosa, and on the line is Member Beals.
All right, thank you, sir. Member Beals, you can hear us okay?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Excellent.
Good evening.
Do you have any other business to get through first?
Could we do that now?
If you'd like. We don't all long to be here.
Okay. The first item is the vote nomination and a vote for the February 7 meeting minutes, which I distributed on March 6th to the chair.
Would you like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second. Member Candido?
Steve.
Member Beals, do you vote on the meeting minutes?
Aye. Beals, aye.
Okay.
DeRosa's aye.
Costa, aye.
And Plonker, aye. Thank you. And the second item on the agenda is a nomination for a finance committee member to, finance committee person to represent the finance committee on the Town Administrator Search Committee. I know I did tell the committee that I didn't, I wasn't sure if I have availability, but after getting additional information on the time commitments, I am able to support that. I know, I'm more than also expressing criticism during that as well.
Only if you couldn't get it. Only if you can't get it. Would you like to make a nomination? Would you like to nominate Mr. Plonker?
Thanks. Katie?
DeRosa's aye.
Costa, aye.
Candido?
Darren?
Beals, aye.
All right, and I guess Plonker, aye. I guess I am it. Thank you. Mr. Cam, that's all we have.
All right. Excellent. Thank you, sir. So I will turn it over to interim Town Administrator Nunes for his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the Finance Committee. Over the past two months or so, I've been working with various department heads. I've met with the members of the Select Board. I've met with Chairman Plonker a number of times regarding the fiscal year 2025 operating budget. And so the presentation that I am making this evening will make its way through the process. As you know, we will have department head meetings in April. We will wait until the new board comes on. And obviously, the Finance Committee will play a role in be participating in those hearings as well. So in an overview of the fiscal year 2025 budget, it is basically a level service budget. There are no employee layoffs. The budget funds contractual and non-union personnel obligations. Department enhancement requests were not funded. We did give department heads an opportunity to request enhancements, but due to the tough revenue constraints, they were not funded. Employee upgrade requests were also not funded. I'm sure we will get to those at a later date. And the budget is based on conservative revenue projections. The fiscal year 2025 revenue by source, you could see that the total tax levy accounts for 83% of the revenue. Local receipts, 12%, and state aid, 5%. Total revenue by source is $36,434,781. Total operating revenue, the levy for fiscal year 25 will be $28,125,641. Two and a half percent increase, which we allowed by Massachusetts General Law, is $703,141. New growth, we're estimating low this year, $129,960. As you all know, new growth will be certified in the fall by the Department of Revenue. Debt exclusions, $890,963. The Lakeville, should be Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District exclusions total $154,321. So the total tax levy is $30,426. And projected revenue state aid is a little more than $2 million. Our local receipts, we're estimating at $4.250,000. Free cash, we are using free cash, $120,000 in free cash to balance the budget. I'll talk about that in a few minutes. And the septic loan program is $58,101. Total revenue, total other revenue is $6430,755. So when combined the levy revenue and the projected revenue, other revenue, it's $36,434,781. So the property tax levy is a statutory mechanism to fund local government operations. It is administered by local government. It is the largest source of local government revenue. As I mentioned a minute or so ago, the levy includes, includes the levy, two and a half, 2.5%, two and a half percent increase, new growth, and debt exclusions. Lakeville has voted debt exclusion over the past years. Debt exclusion is an action taken by a community through a referendum to raise the funds necessary to pay for a project from the property tax levy, but outside the limits of proposition two and a half. In Lakeville, debt exclusion revenue totals $1,045,284. That has been for the Route 79 project, the police station, and renovation and reconstruction of the Austin School. New growth, just kind of gives you a comparison, current and historic new growth. A fiscal year 25 projection, as I mentioned, we are projecting $129,960. New growth was certified in fiscal year 2024 at $341,078. Fiscal year 23, $522,531. Fiscal year 22, certified at $625,186. So, but, you know, the town may not see much new growth in fiscal year 25. Hopefully, it'll be more than what we are projecting. And if so, we will adjust our budgets. We will adjust our budget in the fall, before the fall town meeting, so the Department of Revenue can certify the tax rate. But the town will be, you know, achieving significant amount of new growth. I'm not quite sure in fiscal year 26, but most likely in fiscal year 27, with the proposed $125 million development of 43 Main Street, there'll be permitting fees, real, and personal property taxes. As you know, that project will be built in over phases, probably over the next two to five years. State aid, the two largest forms of state aid for Lakeville are unrestricted general aid and Smart Growth School reimbursement. The budget that is presented this evening is based on Governor Haley's fiscal year 25 budget recommendation. As we all know, the House of Representatives present their budget in April, the Senate budget in May, and then it goes to Conference Committee over the summer and signed by the governor, usually at the end of July, early August. But I'm pretty confident that for the most part, these state aid numbers will stay intact. Not quite sure necessarily on Smart Growth, but I believe the House, Senate, and the governor have come with a consensus state aid number statewide. So the fiscal year 25 state aid for Lakeville is a little more than $2 million. There is some good news, increase in Smart Growth reimbursement of $267,750. So a net increase of state aid of $296,430 over fiscal year 24. For those at home who may not know what Smart Growth reimbursement is, it's an annual state reimbursement provided under Mass. General Law's Chapter 40 S for additional school costs for students living in Smart Growth zoning districts, Chapter 40 R. And there are, I believe, two communities who take advantage of Smart Growth development. Assessments, cherry sheet assessments are charged as assessed by the Commonwealth in Plymouth County. Fiscal year 25 state assessments total $220,417. So local receipts, what are local receipts? There are examples of local receipts include motor vehicle excise, meals and rooms, which Lakeville does not have, excise penalties, Medicaid reimbursements, fees, license and permits, fines, investment income charged for services. So the biggest portion of local receipts are motor vehicle excise. We are projecting fiscal year 25 motor vehicle excise at $2260,000. Fiscal year 24, this fiscal year, we are projecting $2 million. And you could see the actuals for fiscal year 23 and fiscal year 22. Ambulance EMS fees, I did, Todd Hasset, the town accountant, and I met with Fire Chief O'Brien on this. She was, you can see, it's been pretty consistent of a little more than $1 million for fiscal year 24, 23, and 22. And for fiscal year 25, we're projecting $1,025,000. Cannabis revenue, as you know, Lakeville does have host community agreements. I believe we have five host community agreements. We are not projecting any revenue from cannabis in the fiscal year 25 budget. Hopefully, that will change. And if it does, that will be good, obviously, for the town and for estimated receipts. As you know, we are, there are some legal issues that the town is engaged in. Hopefully, they will be resolved shortly. And there have been some legislative changes to the cannabis law regarding host community and development agreements. And I believe the regulations have come out and they were established by the Cannabis Committee. But these discussions will be ongoing with our Town Council and the Select Board, as well as the Finance Committee. So free cash, free cash is defined as unrestricted and available funds for appropriation by town meeting. It is certified as of July 1st, based on the June 30th balance sheet, which results, which reflects results from the prior year. We should use free cash, considered as non-recurring revenue. But during challenging budget times, sometimes free cash is a necessity to balance the budget. Free cash, fiscal year 24 actual, which was certified as of July 1st, 2023, which was certified in the fall of 2023 by the Department of Revenue. Free cash was certified at $3,911,500. The balance as of March 4th is $1,587,375,000. So how did that go from 3.9 to 1.5? Those were all votes at town meeting, I assume, the fall town meeting. Free cash certified fiscal year 23 actual was a little more than 4.4 million. Fiscal year 22 actual was a little more than 4.6 million. So free cash will be used to fund ongoing capital projects and subsidies for the parks commission and transfer station. As you all know, it's been past practice to fund the Enterprises Transfer Station and Park Department of these, I believe of these amounts, at least of the last fiscal year. So due to the challenge of balancing the budget and consultation with the town accountant, we both agreed that we could use $120,000 to offset the subsidy for the transfer station and the park commission. And the July 1st, 2024 free cash will be certified in the fall of 2024. Stabilization fund, stabilization fund is basically a rainy day fund. Stabilization fund balances carry forward from one fiscal year to the next. You can earn interest on the balance in the fund. A two-thirds vote of town meeting is required to appropriate into or out of the fund and to amend the purpose of the fund. The current balance in the stabilization fund is a little more than $2 million, $2,62,191, off 5.6% of the fiscal year 25 general fund operating budget. The percentage does not include enterprise accounts or items to be raised on the recap sheet. We get into now the other part of the budget is the expenditures. Fiscal year general fund appropriation of $35,872,184. And you can see the percentages on the pie chart of each category of government. So the total operating expenditures does not include the parks or transfer station subsidy or items to be raised on the recap sheet. You can see the categories of government, general government, public safety, education, public works, human services, culture and recreation, debt service, intergovernmental charges, and fixed costs. And the budget is a 4.51% increase over fiscal year 24. Fixed costs, it's a big part of the budget, is unemployment group insurance and risk management. As you know, we have had some discussion over the past several weeks in regards to health insurance. health insurance. The town is a member of the Gateway Health Group Joint Purchasing Arrangement, consistent of the Town of Carver and Old Rochester Regional High School. The Health Group is self-insured. The group is currently facing a one point seven million dollar deficit in claims. In honor to reduce the deficit and a seventeen point, a seventeen percent fiscal year twenty-five premium increase, the following measures will hopefully occur. The town will pay one hundred and ninety, one hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars. We are, the town is the employer for a December premium holiday which was granted to the employees back last fall. See, I wasn't here, I know the previous town administrator was against this. The current HR director was not supportive of it. Who was not here, I should say, the current HR director was not here at the time when this was granted. Anyways, it's something that we have to address. But I do, I would like to say that the employees will not be required to pay back the premium holiday. It will only be the employer, which is the town, and that hundred and nine thousand dollars is currently in, will be able to make do in the fiscal year twenty-four budget. We will not have to go to town meeting looking for a free cash transfer. We are optimi, I should say, I guess slightly optimistic that claims for the remainder of fiscal year twenty-four will be, will move in a positive direction. It is our understanding that claims in January was moving in the right direction. We will know February claims mid-March. So what do we need to do? The Select Board heard a presentation at the last meeting regarding the introduction of health reimbursement accounts, HRAs. We will bid, I should say not we, but the Gateway Health Group will bid procure Administrative Service Offices, ASO. We will initiate Chapter Thirty-two B, Sections Twenty-one, Twenty-three, and that is on the agenda this evening. We will get, we will get more into that, you know, in a few minutes. We will reconvene the Insurance Advisory Committee, the IAC. We will reconvene the Public Employee Committee. The current HR Director, Lacy Marshall, and I will meet with, we are meeting with department heads tomorrow. We are having a department head meeting, and there are a number of items on the agenda. Health insurance will be a topic of discussion. And Lacy and I will also be meeting with representatives of the union, who will be serving on the IAC and the PEC group. The fiscal year twenty-five health insurance appropriation is fully funded, based on the information that we have today, to provide health insurance to employees in the town's health program. The fiscal year twenty-five health insurance appropriation is two million, two hundred and eight thousand, eight, two million, two hundred and eight thousand, three dollars, an eight point five percent increase over fiscal year twenty-four. Now, if we implement what I mentioned a minute or so ago, what was discussed at the previous Select Board meeting, our goal is to get below the eight point five percent increase. It's too early right now to project that. We will know, hopefully, you know, before the end of the fiscal year, and any adjustments could be made when the town, when we go to the Fall Town Meeting and finalize the fiscal year twenty-five budget. Currently, we have fifty-six active employees, fourteen retirees, and a hundred and eleven retirees on the Medicare Supplement Plan, MEDX. It is my recommendation, and I did mention this at the Select Board meeting the last two weeks ago, and I've had this discussion with Lacy. Moving forward to procure the services of a healthcare consultant to review claims and seek other healthcare options for fiscal year twenty-six and beyond. There are other health group, joint purchasing groups out there. There is the Group Insurance Commission, there is Meyer, there is the Mayflower Health Group. I know there are others that the town should explore. That does not mean that we are going to do it. Obviously, the unions will be consulted, department heads will be consulted, retirees will be consulted, Select Board members, member of the Finance Committee. It will be a discussion that I think the town needs to have moving forward. When you have, when you're self-insured, and in this case where claims may be high in one community or a school district, it does have an impact overall. If you move to a premium base, which I like, it is the number of employees, time the premium cost, that equals the appropriation. It's a lot easier to budget, and it's a lot easier to explain to local officials and to employees. Retirement, Lakeville is a member of the Plymouth County Retirement Association. The fiscal year twenty-five appropriation is one million, six hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars, an increase of eight point five percent over fiscal year twenty-four. The retirement appropriation is funded as requested by the Plymouth County Retirement Board. The retirement appropriation has increased twenty-seven point five percent since fiscal year twenty-two. The goal of the county is to have the fund fully funded by June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight. Whether or not they will change that, I've seen other groups do that, but I believe in talking with the town accountant, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight is the target goal. Other post-employment benefits, which I'm sure this board has discussed in Finance Committee in past years. The current balance in the OPEB trust account is two million, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred dollars. It is my understanding that an annual town meeting article is presented and the amount of three hundred and ten thousand to be transferred into the trust account. And if that is done, at town meeting, you will see in excess of three million dollars in OPEB. Debt, projects reflected in the debt appropriation of one million, three hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars is estate revolving fund, sewer projects, the septic program, the police station, Route Seventy-Nine, which there were costs for engineering, land takens. I assume design, not quite sure exactly, but I know Route Seventy-Nine was part of that debt appropriation. A new ambulance and the Assawamset Elementary School window indoor project, which is new debt. Public safety, police, the budget maintains current staffing. The fire, the budget maintains current staffing. The operating budget does not fund the four fires, four firefighters hired with ARPA funding. It is my recommendation to fund the four firefighters with ARPA funding in fiscal year twenty-five for a total cost of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars. And in consultation with Chief O'Brien, I know he's consulted with the Select Board as well, to pursue a safer grant to fund four firefighters beyond fiscal year twenty-five, which would be a three-year commitment. Education, which is a big portion of the budget and has been discussed in various forums over the last several months. As you all know, we are part of the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District. And the fiscal year twenty-five appropriation is seventeen million, one hundred and forty-four thousand, thirty-five dollars. I'd like to give a shout out to the Chairman of the Finance Committee, Chris Plonker, for being engaged in the process with the Freetown Finance Committee, meeting with the School Committee. I know members of the Select Board have also been involved. We are, I am recommending a reduction of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars from the original budget request of seventeen thousand, five hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. The Freetown, Town Administrator, myself, had a meeting with Superintendent Strauss and the Business Manager and his team. We talked about the challenges for both communities. Obviously Superintendent Strauss works very closely with the School Committee that has representatives of Lakeville and Freetown. They will be, they've had some budget meetings. I believe they will be adopting the final budget on April third. And conversations over the last several days with school officials. We are optimistic that if the School Committee does go along, we'll be able to reduce the budget by three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars. This will also be, there will also be a reduction for Freetown. Their reduction will be smaller, but I think it's in excess of two hundred thousand dollars. If this appropriation stands at seventeen point five million, it will result in no Proposition Two and a Half override or cuts to services. There are currently fifteen hundred and six Lakeville students in the district. As you all know, Lakeville is also a member of the Old Colony Regional Vocational High School. The fiscal year twenty-five appropriation is two million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. There are one hundred and fifty-two Lakeville students. As you know, Chairman Day is a member of the, I believe, Building Committee for Old Colony. As you know, they are in the early stages, planning stage for future renovation of the high school or new construction that will be discussed, I'm sure, in length at future Select Board meetings. The Old Colony Regional School Committee, which Lakeville has three members. There are five communities in the district, each community is represented by three school committee members. I did have the pleasure of meeting them with the Superintendent several weeks ago. And we talked about the budget and the good programs that are offered at the high school. They are also going through the budget process. I'm not quite sure if that number will be adjusted downward. If so, obviously, we'll make the necessary adjustments. Bristol County Agricultural School, which Lakeville sends thirteen students to, there's fiscal year twenty-five appropriation of four hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars, includes transportation. Norfolk County Agricultural School, there's a fiscal year twenty-five appropriation of one hundred and ten thousand dollars, also includes tuition and transportation. There is one Lakeville student that attends Norfolk County Aggie. Enterprise funds, enterprise accounts allows for a separate accounting and financial reporting mechanism for municipal services for which a fee is charged. Lakeville has two enterprise funds, parks and the transfer station. Retained earnings stay with the fund and are certified similar to free cash. The current balances in retained earnings, parks, twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars, transfer station, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars. Because the town is subsidize, subsidizing the enterprise funds, really technically, they're not enterprise funds, but Mass. General Law does allow cities and towns to subsidize the enterprise funds. How do you balance the enterprise fund? Again, you need the revenues matches expenditures. You either raise revenues, raise fees, or cut expenditures. So those are, that's how you balance the enterprise funds, just like you balance any budget, revenues must meet expenditures. Capital planning, as you all know, the town has a capital investment plan. And I understand we are in the process of setting, scheduling a capital planning committee meeting. Is based on using conservative financial estimates and procedures. Previous town administrator and the current town accountant, I'm sure all of you were involved, working with department heads and putting this capital plan together, which is in your packet this evening. Projects slash equipment are funded through free cash, capital stabilization fund, overlay surplus and retained earnings. The capital stabilization fund balance is three million, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars. It is my understanding that this fund was established and the amount of money that's in this fund is for potential funding, for partial costs, for funding, design, engineering costs, et cetera, for a new fire station. Capital items proposed in fiscal year twenty-five. Police Department, three police cruisers, seven tasers. Fire Department, there's a lease purchase on a ladder truck. Design, construct fire station, again borrowing to be determined. We do have a meeting of the Subcommittee, this is a Wednesday evening. You're all obviously invited to attend, it's a public meeting, six-thirty?
Yes.
It's at six-thirty here. Animal Control is requesting a truck, a new truck. Public Works, road improvements, riding mower, material removal, one-ton dump truck, paved DPW lot and drainage, radio repeater and a roll-off truck for the transfer station. And there's funding for parked North Fields water electric hookups. Okay, ARPA, American Rescue Act. These projects have been approved as of February twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four. The Town of Lakeville received two allocations, one from Plymouth County and one directly from the federal government. And they are being closely monitored by the Town Accountant's Office. Plymouth County allocation was a little more than two, little more than two million dollars. What has been funded, I should say, what has been allocated for these projects? And I don't believe all of these funds have been expended. The water project, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. Ambulance, five hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and three dollars. The Old Town Hall restroom, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars. The Gamash Playground, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We have a balance in Plymouth County of eight hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars in ARPA funds. We did, I believe, there was a revenue replacement of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars. The direct federal allocation was one million, two hundred and ten thousand, seventy-three dollars. And I know all of these allocations have not been expended in talking with the town accountant. Water feasibility study, fourteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. COVID-nineteen testing, one hundred thousand dollars. Outdoor stage cover, twenty thousand dollars. Ted Williams Tennis Courts, forty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. New Fields Project, one hundred and twenty thousand. New Field Supplement, thirty thousand. Firefighter Staffing, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. Investment earnings of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars, which leaves the town a balance of seven hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty, one hundred and twelve dollars. But I know that balance will be higher because we didn't expend a hundred thousand dollars in COVID-nineteen testing. Same with a few other projects. So it is my recommendation, and as I mentioned, I'll be meeting with department heads tomorrow, is that we move forward in expending the available balances in ARPA funds. Because if we don't expend it, the town will lose the money. I believe we have to commit the funding by this June thirtieth and have the projects completed by June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five. So basically, we have a year and a half to decide, we have four or five months to decide of how we're going to use remaining ARPA funds and projects completed by June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five. So I would strongly recommend that we move forward. I think it would be a great discussion to have with the Select Board, Finance Committee, Department Heads, to come up with a plan to expend the available balances. That concludes my presentation. We will have this presentation on the website. And I'll gladly answer any questions.
I think we need a minute. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll just jump right in. How much of the the federal allocation of the ARPA funds do you think we need to keep on standby for firefighters?
That is two hundred and, it was in my presentation, two hundred and fifty-four thousand? Is it two fifty-four?
So then that comes from not seven forty-five?
Yes, that will come out of the federal allocation, yes. And obviously, if there's discussions, the town accountant will be here as well.
Yeah, and that would get us through June?
Up twenty. Correct. That is correct. And again, the goal is to pursue safer funding.
Yep.
Is it correct that if we are awarded a safer grant, that would kick in roughly September of this calendar year?
Not quite sure on that. Chief O'Brien said that the guidelines in the application have not come out yet.
Okay.
He did say it is a three-year grant program, does not require a local match.
Okay, so best case scenario would be that it comes out sometime during the fiscal year, and then that would reduce what we'd have to allocate.
That is correct.
Another question, Mr. Chair. So the tower money that we received? The tower money that we received, the two million dollar upfront payment we got?
That's, is my understanding, it's a lease purchase. So that for, I believe, for the ladder?
Cell tower.
I'm not.
We, we moved that into reserve fund at town meeting.
Into reserve fund.
Yeah.
So, obviously, Lorraine and I, when this happened last year, we were a little concerned with losing that forty thousand dollar a year. Um, cell tower payment. We could really use that forty thousand dollars this year. Um, so, let's say something changes, how do we access that at town meeting?
Don't know, uh, I don't think I'm aware of that fund, but I will, I'm meeting, I'll meet with Todd tomorrow and get right on it.
I think we've put it in cap- capital stabilization.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that was the vote, it wasn't, it wasn't the reserve, um. Because right now our balance is three million, five thirty-nine, two fifty-one, which is basically what, you know, Todd had indicated, once that money was transferred in there, so. Um.
The, I know the former town administrator had his eye on potentially using some of that towards fire station design and such. So we'd have to, two-thirds vote, I think, at town meeting to pull some out if we wanted to.
Yep, so my, my point, yeah, my point is, if you can just figure out, you know, what. You would might like to do with some of that, I mean, we didn't wanna just spend two million bucks upfront. You know, we just wanted to, but we do recognize that we, we got that one lump sum payment for a twenty-year contract.
It was a twenty-year.
Um, yeah, as opposed to getting forty thousand dollars per year. And we knew we would miss the forty thousand, but we didn't think we would miss it this much, so. But the money is there, so just if you can, just keep an eye on, on that for us.
Mr. Chair, through.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, on the cell tower project, exactly, piling off what, um, Leah and, and Lorraine were saying, is. When we structured that warrant article, we made it so it was a, a capital, how do we put it? It was a, it was a capital stabilization project?
Yeah.
So the interest stayed with that?
Yeah.
I- is there another fund that we could use where we would put it in there, but we would be able to use that interest as a recurring? Dollar amount into the operations budget, because that would give us the best of both worlds. We'd have that lump sum.
Yeah.
And, you know, with the interest rates where they are right now, we would have reliable revenue source. That it would offset some of our losses for the operating budget.
I would think you would, the investment income would have to stay in the fund. And the, and the town doesn't, uh, does incur investment earnings in the general fund, funds, but if they like stabilization. The town occurs, you know, investment, um, funds, and that stays in the stabilization fund, and stays in the fund, so.
So there's no way to use the earnings in the operating budget, okay?
The negative.
Nice try.
Yes, it was a very good try.
That's a good try, actually.
Well, it'll be interesting to, you know, I'll ask, um, the town accountant in one of our public meetings, um, just to have that, um. What that interest earning amount was, you know, based on before the two million went transferred in there, just so that we can have an idea.
Yeah.
Yep, you know, kind of what we're, we're gaining, because it gets added on and then becomes.
I mean, the.
When was that established, the fund?
I think it was this time last year, maybe, well, we waited until town meeting, of course, but.
In November.
The check came in this time last year.
Oh, really, okay.
Yeah.
So it's a relatively new.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, I mean, the negative to pulling out the interest, it mean we'd also be giving up compound interest too, so you'd have to.
Way that.
Way that out and see what makes more sense over time. But I think that, the, I'm curious for Todd to say, cause I feel like that number was forty or seventy thousand in the last, the year before that renewal happened. Um, I'm pretty sure we'd already pulled that out of this fiscal year, figuring that wasn't gonna be there anyways. Um, not that we wouldn't like more.
Did we? Maybe we did, because, so it, it should have already been in this.
It was already, yeah.
You mean the forty thousand that we were getting as a revenues? It should have.
That was taken out.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that's an excellent presentation, Bob, I really do appreciate that, I think that's something everybody can understand, well done. Um, you know, is there any other general questions from the Finance Committee or Select Board? I know we'll be having some nitty-gritty meetings, uh, probably mid-April or so, mid-late April.
Yes.
With, going through each of the general areas.
I just got another one.
Yeah, go ahead.
On your cherry sheet estimates, um, you have two million in the, in the majority of that delta from last year, is that from the smart growth?
Yes.
Um, so, on the smart growth, is that predicated on the one-for-one, when you're calculating what the, the bonus number is?
Not sure.
Okay.
I'm not sure how that came about. Um, the town accountant told me that that number has changed in the past.
Significantly.
Yes, significantly, so, again, this is based on the governor's budget.
Yeah.
Hopefully the House and the Senate will have that same number. Um, so we will see.
Yep. I mean, just if we could remind everybody, I mean, you started with a. Three-quarters of a million to a million-dollar gap that you had to figure out.
Yeah, it was, uh, the gap was a little more than.
One point seven million.
Was it one-seven?
One million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars is the gap.
All right, and we've somehow closed that.
Yes.
To where.
Through some budget cuts, uh, using free cash, the big part of that was the reduction in the school appropriation.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I do want this to be a collaborative approach, uh, this, you know, the department budgets and my recommendations, there's not much to cut. Uh, without impacting services.
Yeah.
But obviously, working with the Select Board and the Finance Committee, um, I know, I'm sure you'll have some questions, a few things have come up. Since I finished the budget, we'll get into nothing major, um, so we may have to tweak the budget here and there, again, it's only recommendations. The Select Board and Finance Committee, you know, work well together, I'm sure that will continue, and we're all in this together, so.
Yeah.
Um, so, and everyone has good ideas, so.
Yeah, so, e- even looking back at the new growth numbers of twenty-twenty-two, which was a very healthy six hundred and twenty-five thousand. Twenty-twenty-three was a half a million, five hundred and twenty-two thousand. And I know we're only hovering at a hundred and thirty thousand right now, but still, even if we were at. Six hundred and twenty-five thousand, you had to cut a million, so.
Hmm.
You know, even if we had a healthy growth, we would have still been cutting our budget a little bit. And I mean, we know that insurance, insurance is up, you know, insurance is a problem, you know, the increase. Everywhere, I think we've been talking about it at the county and everything, um, but, you know, it's just, uh, we've never really been. At least not since I've been paying attention, been very spend thrifty, so it's just sometimes a representation of what's happening everywhere else, and you just have to. Do the best we can, which is a point not to overspend.
That's correct.
Any, even when the money's flowing.
Yeah.
You know, we shouldn't be, um.
Right.
You know, right.
So, even on capital, I mean, we're, we'll be looking for some, and we'll get into it as we move through the process. You know, we're gonna spend free cash down. A little concerned about that, we do have stabilization, we will have, you know, I'm sure we will have free cash when it's certified, uh. In the fall with turnbacks, and hopefully we'll exceed estimated receipts, you know, there's a number of factors that go into it.
I mean, the, the last few years have been strictly level services budgets, I mean, really haven't. There haven't been a lot of new things, couple positions, but beyond that, not a whole lot. I mean, I think it also shows just how razor-thin we are.
Yeah.
And fixed costs especially are outpacing what we can raise through the normal levy.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, nobody wants to hear the term override, but I think we need to at least have in our minds that we might not be far away from one if those costs continue to go at the rate that they are. There's just nowhere, I mean, your presentation shows eighty-three percent is just the levy itself.
Exactly.
Um, so it's, I'm impressed that we clawed back this much this year, but the next few have me concerned.
The increase in the levy is going directly to, to Freetown, Lakeville Regional School District.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
It usually does, yeah, yeah, usually does for us.
So, so the, the schools get all the new money and we make do with what's left. It's getting very challenging.
We're at sixty-five percent of our budget?
Fifty-seven, I think.
Fifty-seven percent, yeah, of the entire budget.
Yeah, fifty-seven.
That's increasing year over year.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, it's hard because they did just have the, um, uh, the strike, the big teacher strike, and. You know, I want a great education system for our kids, but, you know, we still have to pay for everything else. So it's, I don't think anyone sitting in, you know, the Select Board position has ever said, oh, I don't want the kids to have something, you know? I think it's just, you know, looking at the numbers, and I do agree with what Brian is saying, you know, we were a little nervous. And we didn't need an over, we, so far, we don't need an override, we just have to make sure, you know, the numbers stay consistent, but. It may not be far off, there's a lot of other communities going for the override this year, and health insurance is a big reason why, so, you know. Um, but anyways, very well done, I mean, I really like this presentation. Um, this is great, it's very easy to understand, um, making notes like I'm in school.
All right.
Mr. Chair, this time.
Yes, sir.
And I'd probably thank, um, Mr. Noonan Stew for collaborating closely with me, keeping, um, the meeting I had last week was very productive, gave me that preliminary luck and the collaboration. All of us in there, in the air, board as well, uh, the work we've done with the school committee as well, that was a challenge too, so I'd probably acknowledge and thank everybody for that. And the presentation was fantastic, too. You incorporated my, my, I had a couple requests, thanks.
Yes. Did I, did I do all right?
Perfect.
All right. I told Todd, we gotta make Chris happy.
How does that make you feel, Chris?
All right, uh, if there's no other questions or comments, then we'll thank Mr. Noonan and everybody that was involved in this work and putting the presentation together, and, uh, we'll. Reconfigure ourselves and move on, um, Mr. Chair, do you have anything else?
I do not, but we can, I can entertain a motion to close the Finance Committee meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Please, and somebody rush up, oh.
And then, we're still scheduling them, but probably mid to late April for the more detailed department-by-department meetings.
Now the deals, uh, deals?
Deals, aye.
Thank you, uh, that concludes, uh, closes the, uh, Finance Committee meeting.
Sorry, just totally talk over the folks.
Oh.
I motion Maureen second.
Thank you.
Do we have any other presentations, or can we fill the tanning booth?
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, some more here. You guys gonna hang out? I mean, we'd love to have. All right. All right, so should we go back to number four at this time? Lacy's here with us? You know you wanted to talk about this. Uh, number four, discuss and vote whether to engage in the process to change health insurance benefits under Master and Roach, Chapter Thirty-two B, Section Twenty-one through Twenty-three. So, thank you Finance Committee. We'll be having our HR Director, Lacy Marshall, joining us for this one.
I also brought with me Ed Burns, he is the underwriter for NFP. In case you guys have technical questions that I can't.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
If I may, um, just a few things, as, as I mentioned, uh, Lacy and I have a meeting, uh, on this issue. We'll be reaching out to unions, I know it's a very sensitive issue, uh, so tonight we don't wanna get into specific plans and all that stuff. Some union issues, basically presenting some facts, maybe some recommendations, so, you know, how to move forward.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, floor is yours.
Okay, so, just to kinda reiterate what Bob had said, we were at that seventeen percent, uh, increase in the health insurance. So far, the steps that we have taken have gotten us down to twelve percent. The vote on this tonight would bring us then down to that eight-point-five, and if claims were to continue to go in the right path, we could, you know, continue to decrease. That's not a promise, but with this twenty-one through twenty-three, we could be at like eight-point-five. Uh, so twenty-one through twenty-three gives the municipality the, uh, power to. Say that we are changing the health plan without the use of collective bargaining. With that, you create what's called an HRA, um, it's a health reimbursement account. So that the first year savings, twenty-five percent of that is given back to the employee. So the simplest way that I can put it is, if I go to the doctors today and I normally pay ten dollars. Then the next time I go to the doctors, my copay is twenty dollars. I submit a request to get the reimbursement, and that ten dollars that I paid over is reimbursed to me. So, up to that twenty-five percent, so the twenty-five percent, even though it's within the first year of the savings. It could last us for two to three years, depending on how much of it we're spending. Um, if the person right now was in a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar deductible, they would go up to the five-hundred-dollar deductible, so we would pay that difference. From the two-fifty to five-hundred, if they're at a zero deductible and they go to the five-hundred, we would be paying up to that five-hundred for the deductible. Um, where, the position that we're in right now, I, I came into it, so, this is what I found with Gateway to be our best. Action to get us down to that eight-point-five, and it also gives me that year to look at what else is out there. Um, I have another meeting with Gateway on Friday, where we're gonna discuss, you know, the future of how we see. Gateway as a whole, what we can do to kind of plan better in the future, um, and see what else is out there, but. For the time right now, this is our, our best shot at saving the town from, uh. Being at a twelve percent increase.
All right.
I know.
Does anybody have questions for Lacy at this time?
Um. So, after we vote tonight.
Yes.
Um, then, you will. We have to appoint someone, a retiree, to the committee, is that what happens next?
This is where the fun begins, okay.
I'm not jumping ahead, am I?
No, you are not.
Okay.
Okay, so, once the vote, if it is decided upon, the IAC, which we have had in the past, which is your Insurance Advisory Committee. They form, it has to be members of the collective bargaining units, one person at least from the non-union, and then a retiree. So it's all employees that are affected by the plan. Uh, the IAC receives the fifty-two point zero-three document, which will be prepared by Ed, so Ed is an underwriter, he's. Gonna prepare that for us, which will show what the town is currently paying, what the town would pay if we didn't implement it. What they will be paying with us implementing it, and then the cost savings, and then that twenty-five percent. The IAC looks it over, make sure that everything's in check, and then it moves forward to the PEC, which is your Public Employee Committee. That is pretty much the same, um, same type of people. It doesn't involve having the, the non-union person there, though, so it still has to have your union, still has to have your retirees. And that's when the agreements come into play, um, I don't know.
Well, yeah, it's, generally speaking, it's, it always ends up as, you know, the leadership of the individual unions that, you know, make up the town. Uh, the only difference between an Insurance Advisory Committee and, uh, Public Employee Committee is that the retiree is actually appointed. By the Retire Massachusetts Retirees Association. So, really, generally speaking, that's the only difference. And the lack of having a non-union representative on the Public Employee Committee.
Okay. Um, just to make sure I understand, so our, our, our hope is that we would impact employees as little as possible, where. I'm just gonna pick numbers out that make sense to me, so if our first year savings was five hundred thousand dollars. We would take twenty-five percent of that savings, put it in a pot, and then that pot is paid out to employees. Until it runs out for any delta and things that they pay for. So, hopefully, for a period, until that runs out, as much as we can, they see no impact. I won't say no impact, but a lessened impact.
It, it's coupled with a, a reduction in their premium con- contribution, that's gonna go down also. Uh, so they'll be paying less out of their paychecks.
Okay.
And then this fund will help them reimburse themselves. And then this fund will help them reimburse themselves for any, uh, uh, instances of an increased cost due to the plan changes.
Is it fair to say it's a reduction in, and we're not talking specific plans or anything, but theoretically, is it fair to say it's a reduction in the premium that they have now? Or it's a reduction of if we didn't do anything?
Um, it's definitely a reduction if you didn't do anything.
Correct.
But even beyond that, uh, numbers I've looked at, at least initially, uh, they, actually, I think there's some extra money in there that actually is gonna go below what the anticipated rate increase might be.
Okay.
And we're still working on that. So my comparison, uh, so far has just been of fiscal year twenty-four numbers, because Gateway hasn't set the, uh, rates yet for fiscal year twenty-five. So that, that's probably certainly gonna add a couple of more dollars into that fund. But the percentages will remain the same.
Okay.
Is there a, a timeframe in which the reimbursement request has to be made by the employee?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a, all, there's a whole series of different deadlines that are associated with twenty-one through twenty-three.
No, no, she's talking about something different. So, so the, the way that it would work is there would be a third party that they would submit those, uh, claims to that would pay the reimbursement. So she's talking about.
Yeah, that's, no, no matter how we do it, uh, the goal is to make the reimbursement to the employees very, very quick. That's, that's our intent here.
Not only is it, you know, money involved, it's just their practice as well. Change in behavior. Okay.
Uh, Leah, anything else?
Um, just ready for the next step.
So the next step will get very in-depth, 'cause like I said, this is just the vote on it. And then, so I have a couple of, you know, I, I, Bob and I will have to meet with the, the unions to go over, uh, what the cost savings and all that analysis will be. But I'd also like to hold maybe like a, a town hall or something for the employees so that every employee is invited and can understand what the changes are, how it's gonna possibly impact them, and then the way forward, just so everybody's questions get answered and not just that small group of, you know, the IAC or the PEC.
Mr. Chair?
Hmm.
That's exactly where I wanna jump in. I really would like to see that happen for the employees, 'cause we're changing everything for them right now. And I know it's pretty standard, whatever, but I just wanna say, as one select board member, I know this is gonna affect a lot of people. And health insurance is scary to begin with. It's expensive. We all need it. It's scary, especially if you don't understand it. And I just want every employee to have an opportunity to ask you or Bob or whoever it is, a question on how they're gonna be affected. So I would definitely say, you know, get everybody in. If they don't come, they don't come. But at least, you know, uh, maybe they heard from their union person and they were content with that, that response. But we definitely need to give everyone the opportunity to ask a question.
Yeah, I, I know in my own personal history, anytime I heard my health plan was changing or deductible was changing, the anxiety just goes, phew!
Yeah.
Like, so.
Yeah, and then if you are in a, a, you know, you have a spouse, you're like, oh, now it's true. And then if you have a family, you're like, oh, my God. So, you know, sometimes it's easier when you're single, but, you know, once you add all the others, it really is very anxiety provoking. So we need to do that for them. And I know you'll do a good job.
Yeah, and, and thank you for all of the information that you've been providing here and behind the scenes as well. I know you kind of walked into this, but you've really jumped in and taken the reins, so I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Uh, anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I may, uh, as, as Lacey said, we do want this to be a collaborative approach, uh, involving management and, and the unions and, and the town employees. Uh, this is, this budget is somewhat of a, I don't wanna say move and target, but, um, a lot needs to happen between now and June thirtieth. But we will, as Ed and Lacey and we have discussed at previous meetings, there will be a savings, the twenty-five percent will go in the HRA. Obviously, it depends on what that final rate will be. But there will be, not quite sure if it will be in the, in the Human Resources budget. The savings, if not, we may have to make an appropriation to put that money into the, uh, HRA. That would have to be done, obviously, at, at town meeting. But we should have, by that time in June, we should have a better idea of where we're, where we're going. But I just want people to beware that, uh, because the budget is so tight, I didn't budget, you know, twelve percent cut. I went down eight pi, eight-point-five percent, which we're, uh, pretty confident of. Um, but a lot needs to happen and we may have to do and make an appropriation at town meeting if the savings is not reflected in the HR budget.
Okay. Thank you for all that.
And Ed will be working with us on that.
And is there anything else you'd like to add before we?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. We are working with KP Law on this.
Good.
And he's very sensitive, I say, with issues. So Lacey and I, Ed, we're all on this, in this together. And KP Law's been great and been very responsive. And they gave Lacey the template, some letters to send out.
Excellent.
That was one of my other questions. I'm not sure if we're there yet, but I'll ask it so I don't forget.
Ask away.
Um, so, of course, all the retirees, um, it's like a two-part question. Does it affect all the retirees or?
So no, it'll only affect the, so we have fourteen retirees that are currently on an active plan. And the reason is because they haven't hit the, uh, age where they would go into Medicare.
Medicare.
So there's fourteen of them that are currently active.
Okay.
Under sixty-five.
Yeah.
Right.
So will, everybody, though, will be notified in writing of the change?
Yes.
But who do we, do we have to notify them?
I do.
This whole, like, committees being put together?
Once the PC and the Select Board come to the agreement, I then send out a letter that tells them that in sixty days, this is what the plan will then consist of. This is what their premium's gonna be. It'll, it'll detail it out for them.
Okay.
Yep.
Will we be inviting them to come to ask questions as well?
Yeah, why not?
Okay.
Chairman, also, there is an opt-out for family and individual plans. Lacey and I talked about that today. Uh, there may be a number of people who wanna opt-out.
Opt-out, yep.
And they'll, you know, they'll receive an incentive. And that's for so long as they're employed with the town, right?
Yes.
And incentive, it's not a one-time deal.
So will this essentially kind of like open up, you know, open enrollment again for a period of time where they have to potentially select a plan or?
So every employee, if this is voted, will go to the five-hundred individual, a thousand-dollar family plan. We have three right now that are actually in the high deductible, which is the two-thousand. So this doesn't affect them at all.
Okay.
Uh, because they're already in that high deductible. This is anybody that's below that, which will increase them to that.
Okay.
So most of our employees are in like the two-fifty, uh, seven-fifty plan. So they're going from the two-fifty individual to five-hundred, and then the seven-fifty to a thousand for family. And then we have some that are actually in like a no copay, uh, which will, I'm sorry, deductible, which will bring them to the five-hundred.
Okay.
So those are the ones that'll all be affected. So if a new employee were to come in, instead of handing them a sheet that says, hey, we have like eight plans, 'cause Lakeville really does have eight plans, it'll be, this is the plan that we offer, these are the rates.
Okay, so they'll just get a one-to-one transition. They won't have an opportunity to say, eh, I want the high deductible one instead, no.
So they could pick the two-thousand, the, the higher deductible?
They could.
But they, there's nothing gonna be below that five-hundred, one-thousand. While we stay in Gateway and, and while we're, you know, sticking with this, again, it gives me that year to look at other opportunities. Um, and, and Gateway right now, we're kind of talking about, so the way that the collaborative groups work is it's based on pooling. So we only have seventy employees that contribute to health insurance. Um, in order to even see any kind of savings, you have to be at like the thousand employee level. So that's why people pool together, so that they get that number. What we'd like to see is having that thousand people pool or more, but then your premium is based off of your claim. So Lakeville doesn't have a significantly high claims rate. So our premium would be based off of our claims instead of us incurring the debt of the other, uh, groups' claims kind of bundled into ours. So it's a discussion that we plan to have and see how that would, you know, impact us in the future. Um, and I started looking at other groups that have that type of plan, that if we fit into, we could move over. But again, it would be based on, you know, if it fits the organization better than where we currently are.
Lacey, I do have a question. Open enrollment, is that done by your office? Or does the Gateway have one enrollment at the same time for all three entities?
No, each, each of the member units, uh, selects their own period of time for the open enrollment.
Which would be done by your office?
Right.
Yes.
My memory might be wrong, but I feel like the deductible numbers you're saying tonight are way lower than the gentleman from the last meeting was saying. I feel like I was hearing like going from two-fifty to two-thousand, like, in my mind was like, wow, those are wild changes.
No, so it's five-hundred individual and a thousand family.
Okay.
So we have three peo, we currently offer a, a two-thousand, um, dollar deductible, which actually hooks into the HSA.
Okay.
Uh, so we have three people that are on that plan. Again, those won't be, uh, affected. If they decide they wanted to go in that higher deductible, by all means, they can. But the plan that we're bringing everybody up to is the five-hundred individual, one-thousand family.
Okay, all right. Yeah, those numbers sound way better than what I thought I heard. Not from you, but what I heard last meeting.
So that's for a family plan, five-hundred per person, a thousand per family?
Yes.
What about if it's a single?
That, that's the individual, the five-hundred.
Okay, so it's just five-hundred?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't offer like an employee plus one, for people without maybe a significant other but not kids or anything like that?
That's, no, it's, it's either individual or family.
Oh.
Which isn't that unusual. A lot of places don't offer, though.
It's unfortunately very common, uh, to have just a single in a family rate. And the reason for it is, at the end of the day, it doesn't matter how many singles, two-person or families you have, you still gotta have the same massive premium dollars. So if you give a break to one group that used to be family.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, you gotta increase the family rates to make up for those dollars. And that, generally, you have more families than you have two-person groups, so.
Okay.
Uh, it just hurts more people.
All right, uh, have we run out of questions? There'd be a lot more to talk about in the future, it sounds like.
I think I'm good for right now.
All right. Well, I'll move for the Town of Lakeville to engage in the process to change health insurance benefits under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty-two B, sections twenty-one through twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, good motion, a second. Uh, Member Carboni?
Carboni, aye.
Member Fabian?
Fabian, aye.
Member Day, aye. Thank you very much. Appreciate all the information and we'll be talking more, I guess. Welcome. Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight, appreciate it. Yeah, we probably should do that.
Just sit back down.
Just sit back down.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Uh, so number eight, discuss impossible vote to appoint a town retiree to the Insurance Advisory Committee. So does that mean that's from the pool of fourteen or is that the larger pool?
So that is the larger pool.
Okay.
Um, I'm getting clarification right now from the town lawyer. So that's the IAC. So as I said before, the IAC has to be comprised of all that are affected by the plan. So retiree, non-union, union, um. We'd like it. The, the letters that I will be sending to the unions tomorrow will say that they need to give me a name by the fourteenth of March. Uh, because we're looking to have the plan implemented by one July, I need sixty days to notify all of the, uh, persons affected. Once it's agreed upon, and the, the Public Employee Committee gets thirty days to, uh, really review it. So that, we're backing up into, that's ninety days, and then we're already like halfway through March. So I'll be sending that to all of the unions, as well as reaching out to those eleven retirees to say, hey, are any of you interested in sitting on the, uh, committee? Because as Bob said, that PEC, uh, once the PEC is formed, that person is determined by the retirement, um, RSC, I mean, uh, they appoint them, so we don't have to worry about that.
Okay. Um, I'm sure you'll get somebody, but in the chance that all eleven are like, no? Then what?
Then I ask the town attorney what I need to do.
Okay, good plan. All right.
I mean, what hap, so if we have four or five people, that, are we notifying retirees? Whether they wanna participate in this?
So tomorrow, my intent is to look up all of the retirees and if they're local, to give them a call and say, would you be interested in being on the IAC?
Okay.
And see where we go from there.
So then hopefully our next meeting, we'd have interested parties to vote on?
I'd really actually have to call you guys for like an emergency meeting to appoint them. So the IAC is not as important, and I don't mean they're not important, so I don't wanna downgrade that. Uh, it's the PEC that actually does the real review and then makes the decision with the Select Board. The IAC is kind, it's just an advisory committee. They're listening to what we have to say and taking it all in, where the PEC gets down and dirty into the numbers and makes sure that our twenty-five percent is our twenty-five percent, that it's really that number is correct, that the premiums are really, like, that's where it's really that strong review. The IAC is more kind of, um, a, a general where the, uh, PEC is more specialized. So I'm not as concerned about the IAC as the PEC.
All right.
So if letters go out tomorrow, um, we made some phone calls. I mean, you have to do the names by Friday, right? That was the fourteenth? I mean, if we had to, we could always post a meeting for Friday for.
We should probably just post the meeting, remote meeting, make it quick.
Yeah, we can do that. That's a quick turnaround.
Yeah.
Yep.
'Cause that's the only thing, really.
Yep.
Um, I, I don't, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bob.
For some reason, if we can't, logistics don't work, can you maybe take a vote to give Lacey the authority to make that appointment? I don't know. Say, I guess we could post a meeting tomorrow to cover the situation. You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
If Lacey gets a name on Thursday and she needs it by Friday, you're not gonna be able to post a meeting.
No, we, we can post one and then if, you know, we don't have everybody, we don't have everybody. So, yeah.
So we'll post it for Friday morning work for you guys or?
Uh, probably.
By Thursday afternoon.
So Friday morning, I do have a meeting with Gateway at eight-thirty, so I'm.
I'd have to be after.
Assuming that's gonna run till about nine, so after that.
And you need it by fi, by the fourteenth, which is Friday? Close of business?
So I'm asking all of the unions by Friday, uh, the fourteenth. I think that's Thursday. Yes.
Oh, so Thursday we'd have to do it.
So I will say, I can put on the memo, though, the fifteenth for all the unions as well. 'Cause I mean, nothing's gonna happen on the weekend.
Right.
So, because I have to serve the IAC with this letter that says, hey, the vote was taken, it was approved, now we're moving into, here's all the documentation with the savings for you to review. Um, and I get to give, once I either speak with them or I hand it to them, if I speak with them, it's ten days. If I hand it to them, if I speak with them, it's two days. If I hand it to them, it's ten days. So I'd really rather have the conversation than wait out ten days. So if we say Friday, I'm good with that. And it gives me a couple more days or a day more to find someone.
Yeah, I, I can do Friday morning.
Yep, I can too.
Friday?
What time?
Uh, so you're.
Anytime after nine.
Anytime after nine? Nine-thirty?
Sure.
Just give you a few extra minutes?
Okay, yep.
Yep.
Okay, nine-thirty.
I have a situation at home that might need my attention, it looks like. Sorry if I'm looking at this, um.
Right now, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay, you need a break?
Yeah, if we could just take a recess and let me make a quick phone call?
Yep.
And then figure out what to do?
Yep.
You're good on your stuff, though, now, I think?
I mean, I think I have one more on there, but I'll come back.
Okay, all right, yeah, let me just make a quick call and, um, recess for a moment. Sorry about that.
I know, I'm not. There is a chill in here.
Okay, so we finished number eight.
Right?
Yep.
Yep.
Tracy, what do you need, like, is there anything I can do right now, or you haven't gotten there yet?
Um, yeah, you can, you can do, you can do them all. Actually, you just need to initial the other one and...
Sign or initial? Sign or initial?
Initial. Initial. And then just sign. There's two of them. Any cue? So where are we now? We're on the...
We're on number six.
Oh, we're on number six?
Number six.
Okay, here we go.
Yeah, number six. Six, which is really eight, I think.
I think.
Alright, welcome back to our previously scheduled show here. Our chairman had to step out unexpectedly, so I'll run the rest of the meeting for the evening. Alright, so I guess we'll look at number six, which is discuss potential disposal of surplus property, Cherry Street. The map block and lot is zero four two, zero one two, zero one five A. And discuss the method of disposing of this property. So this is, I think, the first time I've had something like this come in front of me. So I don't know, Leah, previously, if you've had to discuss something like this?
So, not this specifically, but I, typically, it's the, the treasurer that would request to either auction a piece of property off or something like that. So I, I know why this came to us. But I think there's a lot of history on this property, so in all honesty, I'm not really ready to even declare it surplus property at this time.
We're on agenda item number six.
Six, yeah.
So I know that the town took the property through foreclosure back, for back taxes back in June first of twenty, of two thousand and four. And at the time, I know that they were discussing using it as a pump house location if the Bedford water were to ever be brought into Clark Shores. There's an adjacent owner that would be interested in purchasing the property, so I believe that that's why it did come in front of us at this time, so.
Yeah, I think it was also because last year we had discussed some sort of a butters policy. So I, because of my years on the Board of Assessors, I questioned whether this was taken for back taxes and actually, the treasurer said it was not. So that's why I'm saying I think we need to have, pull a couple of people in to really, because in the past, you know, we've, we've accepted properties and then all of a sudden a secret bill that no one knew about came up, so then we had to get them, that paid and then we had to redo all the work again. So before we go declaring this property surplus, you know, my question is kind of a philosophical one here. Do we want to get into the selling of property? If so, who should be deciding whether we want to sell property? And I know this is coming out because of the butters policy. But, you know, we also know that we have that other land bank where we've banked land and, you know. So right now, I think we need a lot more information on this particular piece of property before we can even declare it surplus, at least before I would feel comfortable taking a vote on this.
I don't object to that either, I mean, I had a few questions myself. So I guess what we can do now is just, we'll just put this on, you know, we'll table this for discussion. But I think in the meantime, if you're interested, maybe get together with, you know, Bob to talk about how...
Because there was a purchase price of two thousand dollars, so you can't have it both ways. You can't have taken it for foreclosure or back taxes
Right.
and have paid two thousand dollars for it. And if that happened, perhaps there was an error. So before we even go, I think we need to clear this. But also, I think we, I'd like to hear the treasurer's opinion, because I know since she's been here, we used to have, Bob, just for your information, we used to have, when I was on the assessors, a tax title list of about twenty properties that, you know, and no one likes doing tax title, but, you know, you, you kind of have to, have to do it. So I don't know, is this, it's a town-owned property, but, you know...
I think it's, I think the situation is bigger than just, you know, this piece of property.
Yeah.
I think that there's a lot more, I mean, maybe we do revisit the butters, you know, policy at some point, but in the meantime, I think that, you know, there's some more information that can be collected
On this particular property.
Situation, right?
Yep, and I do think that there's, you know, like, the driveway is on this side and, you know, so I think there's a lot to be kind of looking at with this. So I, do we have to make a motion to table, or?
No, we can just, we can just say that we'll put this on a future agenda. Is this something that you'd like to follow up with, with Bob on that?
Um, yeah, I think we should definitely get, and involve the treasurer too, because according to her records, and her records go back to two thousand and four. So I don't know, you know, the, I think, I think in Munis it goes back to two thousand and four, so. Definitely need to take a look at that.
Alright. There you go.
Good.
Lacey, you said you were here for something?
No, we're not required. Can I ask a question, Audit?
Sure.
Please come up and state your name.
Thank you. Mark Knox, eighty-seven Pierce Ave. Just curious about a property like that, not necessarily that one in particular, but it sounds like from select member Fabian's knowledge of it, that there may be interest on either side. And I, again, I don't know the whole history of it, but just, if you put it up for auction, maybe one neighbor gets it or not, it could potentially create easement issues. Is it an option for the town to divide it? To, if, if, because I don't think the town wants to own it, is auction the best option for the town if it does get to that point? Or would it make more sense to divide it and push it onto the neighboring two parcels? Just to make a better situation, and that would go to like the Board of Health with the issues they have with nitrogen loading, to say you could create more space on two lots. And again, I know it looks like a favorable gift for those residents, but would that then trigger a better tax base for the town? You're putting it on to making it, you know, a half acre lot instead of a one-thirty acre lot?
Well, as long as you're asking the question. This, this was, so, Lorraine, please correct me if I'm wrong, but none of us were in favor or were willing to approve that a butters policy the way it was presented. It doesn't mean that, you know, it doesn't, we couldn't do some work to it or whatever. So, but that's kind of the question, it's like, should we actually be selling these properties? Which properties, should we be selling the properties that the town's owned? What does the town stake in owning some properties? And up till now, I don't really think it's ever really been considered. Most of the time, we acquire properties through tax title. But then there's never really been a group or a board or a committee to say, you know, what's our goal here? Do we want to hang on to land? Do we want to do exactly what you've said? So I, I think it's definitely something that should be looked at, and I know...
And I'm not trying to get you to answer, it's sort of, not rhetorical, but it's a continuing conversation that probably needs to happen.
And would, would a policy say, for example, you know, in the case of folks who have a difficulty on their property to get a good septic system or a well or whatever, is that what would trigger, let's say, the sale of a town-owned property? So I, I think we definitely need to look at that. I also know, and again, I always say, land use, I have to make a lot of phone calls because it's not my expertise, I'm better at a whole bunch of other things. But we do have, I think, Lorraine, I think Maureen knows more about the land bank, that if we go to use land here, we can, because we've banked other land there, so there's a whole lot to really look at. Now, this particular property, I can see what you're saying, but I think this property has some issues that we have to figure it out. If it was something else, I, you know, could be on board.
Everyone's gonna be case in hand.
Right, right, right. And then I know when we were talking about the actual surplus policy, we kind of got annihilated on Facebook that night because people were like, why should it just be sold to a butters? Why can't it be sold to anybody else? So again, it just, you know, it just, if we're gonna open that can of worms, I think we need to be committed to actually...
Kind of following through.
Following through on it, right, right, so.
Because you presented an option that I hadn't even thought of, so, you know, having it split, you know, A and R and E.
Yeah, if there's two butters.
So if you divided it with the acceptance of the two butters through merger doctrine, because they're undersized and they'd be a common ownership, it would become part of their lot.
Yep, and then it would go back into basically the tax base, right? Not a ton of money, but, you know, it'd still be...
Helping the residents out too.
But probably the first thing would be to offer the auction so that all public would be...
Yep, and then there is a trigger... Of, I think, thirty thousand dollars or something on evaluation that has to go to an auction. Whereas, and again, this would be, like I said, if we open the can of worms, if it's not valued at that much, then I think you can do, you don't have to go, you know, to a full...
Right, it's a value of, the property exceeds thirty-five thousand dollars, you must solicit proposal to dispose of the property, so if it's thirty-five thousand assessed or more.
And then also, the treasurer, you know, she's been really good, Erica, since she's been here at moving some of the properties along. And I'd really like to hear, you know, her years of experience on what she uses to decide which properties, you know, she's, she feels like, you know, I think right now we have properties that have dwellings on them, a couple or something like that. So, you know, I, I think, and this is definitely one where you'd want to have someone from, like, the Board of Health, from zoning, like Nate Darling, because they know the intricacies of, you know...
Yeah, you may not think of that on Board X, but Board Y does, and it's a different concern entirely, so.
Right, so, yeah, so, you know, I'm willing to open that can of worms, but I wasn't gonna push for that right now, but...
Yep, understood.
I got free time!
I appreciate you listening to me, thank you.
We'll have to bring the meeting of the minds together.
Yeah.
For discussion. Alright, no, thank you for that, Mark. Alright. Agenda item number seven, discuss letters of interest received to serve as at-large member on the Town Administrator Search Committee. And I know we received a few letters, but I don't know, if you'd entertain this, Leah, I know with Brian not here, I'd rather have a full complement of this board to discuss. And also, you know, it was brought to my attention that, not that we would have...
Interviews.
Interviews, but it would be nice to notify all the people that had submitted letters of interest, that we would be discussing it. So in case they did want to, you know, attend or, or watch. So I would like to...
I, I will say, you know, just like so many other, you know, committees that we seek an at-large candidate for, I mean, I know all but one of these people and they're all extremely committed to doing service for the town, so it's definitely another one of these difficult decisions. But, yeah, I, you know, I think that I care about Brian's opinion too. The only reason I would, you know, was hoping to get this done tonight is so that we could have like an introductory meeting to, and, you know, Lacey's here, she could, you know, help organize a first meeting and we could just get everyone sworn in and, you know, just lay out some, you know, what things would like to see. And I was kind of willing to go forward with that, Lacey. Just missing the one select board position, which will be filled after, but if we're not gonna fill the at-large one, then, you know, perhaps we should wait. And at least organize meeting times, what's, you know, you get a sense of what everybody's meeting time availability is and... So, yeah, I think we could probably wait if that's what you want to do.
Yeah, so, I mean, our next meeting is the twenty-sixth, I believe, right?
Yeah, twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth?
Yes.
Okay.
Other people are saying it's the twenty-sixth, it is the twenty-fifth.
Okay, so if it's the twenty-fifth... Let me just look at my calendar.
The election is the second, correct? The first, Monday?
It's the first, yep. Twenty-fifth, you're right.
And then we don't have a meeting, when do we have our next meeting?
The eighth of April.
The eighth.
Yeah, April eighth.
Yeah, that's over. That's like a month. That seems like a long time to not do anything with that committee.
Well, if we, if we appoint somebody on the twenty-fifth, you guys can have a meeting that week.
Yeah, maybe, Lacey, I'll work with you and we can try to put together our first. We'll get a couple options, so we can give that appointee...
Okay, okay. So in the meantime, Tracy, will you just reach out to, we had six letters of interest, just let them know that we'll be discussing this on the twenty-fifth? Okay. Two, twenty-fifth. Alright. Alright, so let's talk about number ten. This is discuss impossible vote on a stipend for the planning board clerk, Kathy Murray. So we have a memo here from our human resource director. Regarding Lacey, would you like joining us at the table again, please?
I'm gonna put your name tag there.
A little name plate. If you wouldn't mind just speaking to this and why this is in front of us this evening for discussion and vote?
Okay, so based on the union contract, it states that if a person is working outside of their step for more than ten days, then they should be considered for a step increase. I spoke with the union rep, which is Sean Mahoney, and said that we weren't sure if we were hiring another planner right away, we weren't sure really what direction we were going, and in that case, could we do a stipend instead? So from January eighth till, I set an end date of next Friday, which I believe is the eighteenth of March. Kathy has been stepping in for... Um, Kathy has been stepping in for the planner in conducting the daily business. She was at the time in previously, uh, where they did not have the planning board to have a serpent person. She was contacting them, working with that, um, kind of piecing all of it together with the zoning board, the planning board, and, uh, inspectional services. So based off of that, what I did was I took the same amount as we had done with, um, Chris, who had stepped into my position while I wasn't in. So it's the hourly rate of Mark or the previous planner minus, um, Kathy's position and then cut that again in half. Um, and that's what the hourly rate is. So the stipend for the last three months would be thirty-six hundred dollars for her. Uh, and then on March twenty-first, I believe, what's the Monday? Is it the twenty? Why did I say the eight? What's the eighteenth?
You have the eighteenth on you. March twenty-fifth is the Monday.
Okay, so the eighteenth is the Friday, that's when she finishes all of her duties. Okay, March fifteenth, thank you.
So the eighteenth.
So the eighteenth, she will then, um, begin as the inspectional services, um, clerk and work under Nate, um, so that she has a supervisor and she stays within her, uh, step and grade.
Okay, but of course, at that time, Madam Vice Chair, we're, we really need to figure out what we're doing with that other position, but.
Right.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, um, I will make a motion that we approve a, oh, I'm sorry, are you done?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve a three thousand six hundred dollar stipend for Kathy Murray for time that she will have worked through March fifteenth out of grade, basically.
Yes.
In the absence of a planner.
All right, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
I just want to thank her for doing that.
No, no, absolutely, thank you, Kathy. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you for figuring all that out too, Lacey.
Thank you.
To that point, the topic that you just brought up about moving forward with that position, I know I came to you guys, Mark Knox, the Chairman of the Planning Board, um, to ask to give us a couple of months and figure it out. What I would like to do is, uh, just through the election cycle, if I could get back on the select board agenda to come back on that first meeting after the election. I don't want to make a recommendation before then, just to make sure.
Okay.
Tracy, you have noted that, so we can let Brian know. Thank you. All right, well, thank you, Lacey, very much.
Thank you, Lacey.
All right, agenda item number eleven, um, we have three of them tonight, right?
Yes.
Discuss a possible vote to approve a public weigh license for the Patriot Half Triathlon, which is scheduled for June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. So from what I can tell from this application, um, this is looking for a public weigh license application, uh, for the Patriot Half Triathlon. Um, and this event begins at Camp Cathedral in Freetown, which if you looked at the map, it was kind of difficult, but, uh, comes back through, um, Layfield at one point. So that's why this is in front of us this evening. Um, according to Tracy, all the necessary paper, paperwork and signatures, um, has been included and, um, we're here for discussion.
Okay, um, so this is the same organization that did it before. They haven't changed, right?
No, it's the same, well, the, the group was bought out, previous groups on multi-sports.
Yeah.
And so, um, it's the person that bought them out. And they were also doing the Cranberry Tri-Fest.
Okay. Is this one of the group, so payment received, so five hundred dollars, which is something that, um, we started. Prior to last year, Bob, we never even charged anything. I don't know if that's common or not common, but, you know, when the DPW director came out, came to us and he's like, I send this, you know, street sweeper out to get everything ready and, you know, then I, you know, do the same thing after the event and, you know, going around, making sure there's no potholes when, you know, so we were like, you know, we should probably get at least some money to cover the cost for that, so. Um, so there's a five hundred dollar payment, right? Are they, I know sometimes these organizations give us a donation.
Yeah.
Do we know if we're getting one on here? I don't see anything.
I didn't see anything, no.
No donation, okay.
They feel the license application is a donation.
Okay, uh, and this isn't one that goes in front of the parks, right?
No.
Because it doesn't use their property, okay. All right. I will make a motion that we approve the license application for the Patriot Half Triathlon on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
And can we just include the time from seven AM?
Oh, seven AM to.
I think it's nine AM.
Nine, seven AM to nine AM.
All right, I'll second.
And just one bit of discussion that I forgot. I think they send out a postcard to people on the routes, don't they?
That was the previous company. I don't believe this company is planning that they haven't said they were going to. I could check and, but that was the previous group.
Can we mandate that? I mean, not mandate's a strong word, but can we ask them to do that? Can we request them to do that? I mean, we don't have to vote it, but we could request, right?
If they could, we could request the same practice as the previous.
Yeah, to notify the folks that threw a postcard. And they, we can request, that's it.
All right, motion's been seconded, um, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, number twelve, um, possible, discuss impossible vote to approve a public weigh license for the Cranberry Tri-Fest, which is scheduled for August twenty-fifth. Um, the application is here, um, and all the paperwork and all the necessary signatures have been received. This has also been, um, discussed in front of the park, with the Parks Commission and their approval is all, is, is after and approved.
Okay. Same kind of thing, I'm not seeing a donation, I guess, you know, um. It, it's, you know.
They're paying the park.
They're paying.
Seven dollars, I believe.
Per person.
Per entry, I think.
Okay, all right, okay. Yeah, participation fee of seven fifty per person, yep, okay. Um, I will make a motion that we approve this public weigh license for Cranberry Tri-Fest on August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four from seven thirty AM to twelve thirty PM.
Did these folks, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Um, did we, did these folks send out any notification either? Do you know?
Well, if we can just do the same thing and just request.
They did.
Yeah.
They might have.
They do request it.
Did we get one, Leah?
Um, I always, yeah, I always got one.
You did.
Yeah, uh, yep, I would always get one, so.
We can put that request in there.
Yeah, we can put it in as a request.
Any further discussion, Leah?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and number thirteen, uh, discuss impossible vote to approve a public weigh license for a five K honor thy mother race, um, scheduled for May fourth, twenty twenty-four. Um, we have our public weigh license application here and the associated paperwork and all necessary signatures, um, are included.
Okay, yep, this one's done every year too, at least since I've been here. So I'll make a motion that we approve the public weigh license for the five K honor thy mother race on May fourth, twenty twenty-four. And it has a race start of nine AM, but it doesn't go out onto the main street, it looks like, right?
No.
Okay.
All right, I'll second. Any other discussion?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, discuss, um, dates to hold the FY twenty-five budget meetings with the department heads. So, um, we have in front of us a list of suggested dates for May, June and July. So, May sixth and May twentieth, uh, were discussed as potential dates for May.
Um, hold on, we're at number fourteen?
Oh, did I go to the wrong one?
Yeah, number, yeah, number fourteen.
Silly.
Yeah. Um, Madam Vice Chair, do you know if Brian, does anyone know if Brian was okay with these dates?
Yeah.
He was, okay.
But Madam, uh, Madam Chair, um, August sixteenth, one of the remaining members of the Finance Committee after the election is not able to attend. And, um, Chair Day had said he would like them both to be there.
Okay.
So, um, he was thinking we could do seventeenth and eighteenth and then hold one meeting the week after. Um, that member is not available, um, the Monday or the Tuesday of that week. So he would be available to meet on April twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth.
So take out the sixteenth.
Correct.
And seventeen.
Seventeenth, eighteenth and.
And then either the twenty-fourth or the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth would work better for me, but it's a Thursday. We have a select board meeting on the twenty-second. And as far as you know, Brian was okay with the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth?
He, yeah, he said we would talk about it and, um, there's, um, a religious holiday on the Monday or Tuesday, so he cannot attend.
Gotcha.
Um, so it would either be the twenty-fourth or the twenty-fifth.
Well, we can always come back to that too, but at least let's secure the seventeenth and eighteenth.
Yeah.
And then get the schedule set for the twenty-fourth, you know, twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth. I have a serpent meeting on the twenty-fourth, but, you know, if this is, you know, if it comes down to. I could miss the serpent meeting.
Um, I can do the twenty-fifth, I didn't think I could, but I can.
All right, so let's, let's schedule it for the twenty-fifth then, April twenty-fifth.
Okay, so, um, we'll do the seventeenth, the eighteenth and the twenty-fifth.
Yep.
And we will let, um, interim Town Administrator Bob Noon surprise us with the agenda.
Will do, thank you.
Agenda and location.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, I don't even know how we do it, in all honesty. We've done it, you know.
I have some ideas and I've talked to Todd about it, so we'll, we'll put a schedule together.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so seventeen, eighteen and twenty-five.
I just, the question is, what time would you like to start these meetings? You want to start them at five thirty?
Five thirty.
Yeah.
And if this room is available, that would be helpful. I'd like to try to have them all at the same location if possible.
Yeah. If not, maybe the COA and try to get all three of them done there.
Okay. All right, moving on to the next one, with the other dates. Um, scheduling the select board meetings, uh, for May, June and July. Um, it's always nice to have placeholders out there.
Mm-hmm.
So suggested dates for May and June, and well, we'll start with May. We have the sixth and the twentieth as potential dates. I'm good with those.
Yep, I think so.
The board had discussed those previously, um, when you set the calendar for town meetings, so.
Okay, so we'll stick with those.
Sixth and twentieth, yeah, Memorial Day is after that, right?
Okay. All right, and then June, we have the third. Um, then we have the tenth, the town meeting, then the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth. Um, so we'll just have to, I mean, is there anything that we need from that schedule that we had done? Cause I didn't, I don't have it in front of me, preparing for town meeting, that we would need to meet on the third?
Um, I can look. I did, when I pulled the dates, I kind of worked them around, um, vacation, um, because, so that I would be in the office to prepare the agendas. Um, so that's kind of where I leaned in on that.
So I'm gonna be away the twenty-fourth and the first.
Okay.
So, it, I mean, you know, I, I dislike missing meetings. I've missed one in, I've missed one select board meeting and one assessors meeting in nine years. Um, but, um.
So, Madam Chair, the June, the May twentieth date or the June third date were targeted for warrant review.
Okay, okay.
Um, that's where.
So what did we put on the schedule?
We put both because the board had, did not make a hard and fast decision on which date. Um, and I still have, um, you know, I, I still have like a few things that we have to work out. Um, you know, like the one we're gonna vote on the articles, we're gonna do it May sixth. Um, we're gonna vote on the final warrant on May sixth as well. Um, it's advertised the sixteenth to the twenty-third, depending on the warrant review date. Same thing for the legal ad, um, and then warrant review is either May twentieth or June third. So, and then town meeting is June tenth, so that's where we're kind of at.
Yeah, so I think we should leave the third and the tenth in.
Okay, I'd like to lean more to, and we'll discuss this later, but, um, have the twentieth for warrant review, give people, you know, some ample time before town meeting if they have any questions. So let's, um, so let's just do the third, the tenth and, um, I don't think we're gonna need to meet on the seventeenth, but, and you're, so let's just keep the twenty-fourth for now. Um, I know you'll be away, Leah, but, um, and then we'll do the July eighth and then the twenty-second.
So not the first?
Right.
Okay.
And, um, maybe at the next meeting, we can bring up the draft, um, timeline again and solidify those because that affects when I advertise things.
Yep. So, I want to say we could be. Well, we only have Bob through, through July or through June?
Six months up in mid-July.
Mid-July, so, um, I think, uh, we're definitely gonna need the fifteenth to either appoint another interim or and plan on some, you know.
We can just circle all these dates.
Yeah, I don't know if I want to do, well, and, but you know what? Then it depends on what the actual search committee does because it'll be one hour.
Right, that's gonna drive a lot of that.
You can always not do July, June are the important ones because I needed to have it for the town meeting's timeline.
All right, so we'll hold off on July, we'll, we'll move July out and then, you know, we'll have more members anyways.
Yeah, and more schedules, yeah.
All right, so we'll do, like we said, we'll do the third, the tenth and the twenty-fourth.
The tenth being town meeting.
Yeah, town meeting.
All right. This is always the hardest part.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
Yep.
All right, um, building committee updates, um, is there anything from the senior center?
Um, no, we just have a smaller group reevaluating some of the stuff in the, you know, Bob met, um, with a couple of the staff members, just reevaluating a few things. Um, I think we're gonna convene the actual feasibility study just to. Um, I think we're gonna convene the actual feasibility study, just to get everyone on board, up to speed, but nothing really new there.
Okay. All right, as far as the fire station building committee is concerned, we're meeting this, um, Wednesday at, uh, six thirty at the, uh, Council on Aging, how much, yeah, the Council on Aging, I think. No, we're here. I have three meetings this week, and they're all in different locations, so, all right, we're here. So, um, we're gonna be going over the, uh, the proposed layout that came out of the working group, um, for needs, and we'll be discussing, um, site location. So, um, if anybody's interested, please tune in, or even join us. And that's where we're at right now, and I don't have any updates on the old call any.
Okay.
All right. Any new business, um, coming from the, from the board?
None for me.
Old business?
None for me.
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes.
I do, um, so we received an email, uh, over the weekend regarding the dog incident. As you all know, you had a dog hearing.
Yep.
Uh, several weeks ago, um, I asked the dog officer, the animal control officer, to go to the property today. Um, Tracy also, uh, talked to the animal control officer, and it appears that nothing has been done on the property. Uh, the homeowner was not home today, so the animal control officer did not have an opportunity to speak to the party. Tracy, you have anything else to add?
That's a little bit of a problem. Um, why do I, did we get a message about the muzzle is in use, or?
I, yes, uh, the animal control officer did re- re- re, um, respond, or I guess he went to the property the day after the hearing.
Yep.
And the dog had a muzzle on and, uh, did jump at the animal control officer.
Okay.
The dog was muzzled.
Okay.
So I'm sure the animal control office will continue to reach out to the owner.
Well, we had very specific dates, um.
Yeah, we did, didn't we?
I'm trying, I'm trying to get my hands on them right now.
Yeah, I think we had the eleventh.
All right, let's look. It's like having my office here. Okay. So... We had asked, um, for the kennel within two weeks of the date of the hearing.
Yep.
So the hearing was February twenty-sixth.
And the kennel is not up.
And the kennel's not up.
The kennel is on the premises, it's leaning against the fence. So two weeks from the twenty-sixth would have been, would be today.
Yep.
So we have to be very clear, not just have a kennel, but to actually have it erected.
Well, yeah, it did say, it did say, um, the letter did say erect a chain link a kennel.
We need to, we need to send a letter immediately.
Okay.
Um.
Can we just, um, that was today he went out there, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. So, we wanna say something like, um, upon inspection by the animal control officer on March eleventh, uh, you know, there was no kennel erected as per, um, instructed at the hearing. Um, please call the, uh, animal control for the inspection, or it is, the hearing was subject to that.
Right.
Perhaps we're gonna give them a, a drop dead date?
Well, that was supposed to be a drop dead date.
Um, perhaps we wanna give them, you know, I mean, I think the weather didn't help this past weekend, so, um, I think it was raining all day Saturday, so, um.
Um, well, we could say something like, please let the select board office know by Wednesday. Well, so if it mail, it gets mailed tomorrow.
Oh, I'll have it hand delivered.
Okay, um. When it will be erected, so that way.
We need to state when.
Yes, we need to give them a deadline.
By Friday, and if it's not, then we're gonna have to come up with our next course of action.
Yeah.
Um, perhaps we can add that to your meeting on Friday, in case it doesn't happen, then the, you, the board could vote on a decision whether they're going to remove the dog to the shelter for quarantine until the condition they met, or something like that.
That's the case, we gotta put that in the letter.
I mean, this is, this is a serious situation here, you know, so.
Yep. Um, can you and Bob work with the, on drafting the letter tomorrow? And then just let us see it, but, uh, do we need to take a vote to send the letter?
Well, we can for the record.
Okay, I make a motion that we send a reminder letter to the owners of the dog from the dog hearing last week, what's the name?
Zina.
Zina.
Anything specific you wanna include in that letter?
Um, that they're already passed, they're cut out, the date, and that they need to inform us when let the dog officer know, the animal control officer know when it's gonna be.
Well, if we.
And he will be out for an inspection, whether he hears from it or not, and if the kennel's not up, we will have to, cause we continued the hearing, right? I don't think we closed it.
We did.
Um, we may have to.
Continue the hearing.
Continue the hearing to discuss removing the dog.
I just, um, I don't wanna leave it open-ended with a, no, with a date, without a date, by Friday.
Friday is.
Can we say Saturday, cause Saturday is a weekend day, maybe they can find someone to help them.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Okay, March sixteen.
Yep.
Saturday, March sixteenth. All right, I'll second that. Tracy, I know that was a long motion, but please tone it down to the specifics for us, please. All right.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, um, we had some correspondence in here, um, just a letter from the Cape Rail. I know that this is available for those, um, online if they would like to take a look at it. Um, and then another letter from Xfinity, changing stations, names, and dates of when that's gonna happen. So, if there's nothing else, I'd like to, um, make a motion to enter executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, Bonaful Farms versus the Town of Lakeville, Blimmin Superior Court Civil Action, number two-two-eight-three, CV zero-zero-two-three-zero. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and votes may be taken and not to return into open session.
You moved that, right? Second.
All right, roll call, all those in favor?
Uh, Fabie and I.
And Carboni, aye. All right, seven fifty PM.